I don't want to have to gavel the judges this evening.
(laughing).
Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started with the reorganization meeting of the City Council of the City of Cape May, New Jersey. Today is Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023. The time is now 4:35. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the public which stands alone nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Under the open public meetings law, notice of this meeting was sent to the Cape May County Herald and the Press of Atlantic City, and a copy of the agenda was delivered to each member of City Council and posted on the Cape May City website and Cape May City Hall Bulletin Board. Notice is hereby provided that Cape May City Council meetings are audio-recorded and video-streamed live. Live video streams are posted to the Cape May City website. The City of Cape May is not responsible if audio recording or live video streaming of a meeting is unavailable.
Okay, before roll call, we're going to have to swear some of our newly-elected members in. And with us this evening are the Honorable Judge Pickering. Judge, if you would please swear in our first candidate here, Lorraine Baldwin.
How about if we just put it on the table?
Repeat, you stand over there. Raise your right, left hand on the Bible. Raise your right hand. There you go. All right, repeat after me. Ready?
Yes.
I, Lorraine Baldwin,
I, Lorraine Baldwin.
do solemnly swear or affirm,
do solemnly swear or affirm.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the state of New Jersey,
and the state of New Jersey.
that I will bear true faith and allegiance,
that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
to the same,
to the same.
and to the governments established in the United States,
and to the governments established in the United States.
and in this state,
and in this state.
under the authority of the people,
under the authority of the people.
and that I will faithfully,
and that I will faithfully,
impartially,
impartially.
and justly perform,
and justly perform.
all the duties,
all the duties.
of a Cape May City Deputy Mayor.
of a Cape May City-
Does the right hand?
It's good. A little giveaway.
Of a Cape May City Council person, according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
and that I will not use my office,
and that I will not use my office.
to grant preferential treatment,
to grant preferential treatment.
nor to seek personal gain,
nor to seek personal gain.
favor,
favor.
or advantage,
or advantage.
not available to the general public.
not available to the general public.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations.
I am, I am very proud to have been able to swear Lorraine in. Our families go back at least one generation, and we've been friends for many, many years. I'm especially happy that I was able to elevate her to the new position as well.
(laughing). Okay, and now to swear in Maureen McDade. We have with us the Honorable Raymond, Judge Raymond Batten. Judge, thank you very much for being here.
Retired.
Retired.
I have a couple people coming along.
And, and I should indicate, just as, as a matter of form, I, I perform the function not as a retired judge, but as a licensed attorney in the state of New Jersey. Very good. Left hand on the Bible. Raise your right. And repeat after me. I, Maureen McDade,
I, Maureen McDade.
do solemnly swear,
do solemnly swear.
that I will support,
I will support.
the Constitution of the United States,
the Constitution of the United States.
and the state of New Jersey,
and the state of New Jersey.
that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same,
that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
and to the governments,
and to the governments.
established in the United States,
established in the United States.
and in this state,
and in this state.
under the authority of the people,
under the authority of the people.
and that I will faithfully,
and that I will faithfully,
impartially,
impartially.
and justly perform,
and justly perform.
all of the duties,
all of the duties.
of a Cape May City Council member,
of a Cape May City Council member.
according to the best of my ability,
according to the best of my ability.
and that I will not use my office,
and that I will not use my office.
to grant preferential treatment,
to grant preferential treatment.
nor to seek personal gain,
nor to seek personal gain.
favor,
favor.
or advantage not available,
or advantage not available.
to the general public,
to the general public.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Great to see you. Oh, you're welcome. I'm welcome.
Thank you, everyone.
(inaudible).
And now Judge Batten, if you would stay where you're at. We have one more swearing in of Councilman Shane Meyer.
He's an old hat.
Shane, Shane's the most experienced, so he should know what, what, what he's doing here.
Left hand on the Bible. Raise your right hand, sir. Please repeat after me. I, Shane Meyer,
I, Shane Meyer.
do solemnly swear,
do solemnly swear.
that I will support,
that I will support.
the Constitution of the United States,
the Constitution of the United States.
and the state of New Jersey,
and the state of New Jersey.
that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same,
that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
and to the governments established,
and to the governments established.
in the United States,
and the United States.
and in this state,
and in this state.
under the authority of the people,
under the authority of the people.
and that I will faithfully,
and that I will faithfully,
impartially,
impartially.
and justly perform,
and justly perform.
all the duties,
all the duties.
of a Cape May City Council member,
of a Cape May City Council member.
according to the best of my ability,
according to the best of my ability.
and that I will not use my office,
and that I will not use my office.
to grant preferential treatment,
to grant preferential treatment.
nor to seek personal gain,
nor to seek personal gain.
favor,
favor.
or advantage,
or advantage.
not available to the general public,
not available to the general public.
so help me God.
so help me God.
congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shane. And I should mention that Councilman Jaeger was already sworn in as per the law right after the election, so he had a swearing in. It was very nice, but thank, thank you, Mr. Jaeger as well. And now if I could call on our invocation from Dr. Reverend Nicole Wilkinson. Thank you very much for, and you could stand right up at the podium. That's great. Thank you very much.
It's a privilege to be here with you all today, and honestly, listening to what they just swore to, that's kind of where I was going with the prayer. So, will you join me in prayer? God of our whole lives and our whole world, we give you thanks this day for our community, our little corner of that world. We thank you for its natural environment, for its location here on the southern edge of New Jersey, and for its many advantages and its rich and present history. We ask you, God, to be with those who are serving, who have committed to serve on the City Council and in offices of leadership in this community. We thank you for their commitment, for their willingness to step up, and we ask that you will bless them, give them creativity and diligence, perseverance, and compassion in their duties, that the community may come together in new ways, that we may live more fully into the vision that you hold for us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Okay, on to the agenda here. We have nominations for Deputy Mayor. Do I have any nominations for Deputy Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I nominate Lorraine Baldwin.
Nice second.
Okay, do we have any further nominations? Okay, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Abstain.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes. Congratulations, Lorraine. Thank you. Deputy Mayor. Thank you.
And next we have Resolution-
Yeah. Do we have the oath of office?
So that's why the-
Oh, that's the other.
You can go up for the oath of office.
All right, this time I know we'll get it. All right, you ready? I, Lorraine Baldwin, do solemnly swear,
I, Lorraine Baldwin, do solemnly swear,
or affirm,
or affirm.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the state of New Jersey,
and the state of New Jersey.
that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same,
that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
and to the governments,
and to the governments.
established in the United States,
established in the United States.
and in this state,
and in this state.
under the authority of the people,
under the authority of the people.
and that I will faithfully,
and that I will faithfully,
impartially,
impartially.
and justly perform,
and justly perform.
all the duties,
all the duties.
of a Cape May City Deputy Mayor,
of a Cape May City Deputy Mayor.
according to the best of my ability,
according to the best of my ability.
and that I will not use my office,
and that I will not use my office.
to grant preferential treatment,
to grant preferential treatment.
nor to seek personal gain,
nor to seek personal gain.
favor,
favor.
or advantage,
or advantage.
not available to the general public,
not available to the general public.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you again, Judge. And now that we're all sworn in, can we call, roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Here.
Councilmember McDade?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Here.
Mayor Malick?
Here.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Here.
City Solicitor Gillen Schwartz?
Here.
City Manager Vol?
Here.
and also-present Deputy City Manager Bilasco. Next we have Resolution 02-01-2023, a resolution appointing city solicitor and authorizing the execution of professional services contract for same Christopher Gillen Schwartz Esquire.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
Next we have-
Counsel, I'm sorry. I just wanted to thank everybody for the opportunity to serve again this year. It's a pleasure to work with all of you, and I think you're going to make a lot of progress over the next year, and I have a great respect for the professional staff and all the people that work with the city. It's great working with everybody. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Next we have nominations for various board and commission liaison members. Resolution 03-01-2023, resolution for appointment of Class III Planning Board Member, Michael G. Jaeger.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Abstain.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
And then we have 04-01-2023, resolution for appointment of Washington Street Mall Business Improvement District Management Company, Inc., Board Member, Lorraine M. Baldwin.
Do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Abstain.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
05-01-2023, resolution for appointment of City of Cape May Historic Preservation Commission Board Liaison, Lorraine M. Baldwin.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Abstain.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
06-01-2023, resolution for appointment of City of Cape May Shade Tree Liaison, Shane P. Meyer.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second. Roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
I was told that, you know, when you're nominated for something, that you're allowed to vote for yourself. And as a member of this organism, of the Shade Tree, I appreciate all they do, and I really enjoy being on there, so I will say yes.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes. And Shane, thank you for continuing that.
07-01-2023, resolution for appointment of City of Cape May Environmental Commission Liaison, Michael G. Jaeger.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaeger?
I'll abstain.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
08-01-2023, resolution for appointment of City of Cape May Beach Safety Committee Liaison, Lorraine M. Baldwin.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Abstain.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
09-01-2023, resolution for Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee Liaison, Michael G. Jaeger.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that, I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Abstain.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
10-01-2023, resolution from Municipal Taxation and Revenue Advisory Committee Liaison, Maureen McDade.
Make a motion?
I'll second that motion.
Roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Abstain.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
Okay. Next we have the consent agenda. Is there anything you would like to remove from there?
Any, anything removed, Counsel?
I do have one item I'd like to remove for now, 4101-2023.
Unless Counsel has any others, I did want to make a comment for Counsel on Resolution 1901-2023.
Okay. Okay, anything else, Counsel? Okay. Roll call, or, I'm sorry. Not roll call, I'm sorry. The ones that we pulled.
Should we hear what the Solicitor wants to say?
Yeah. Sure. I just, the comment for that, just going through the contracts for reorganization, our engineering contracts all have similar term language. You'll see that in the RFP for the coastal engineer that's in this packet. You'll also see it for the city engineer appointment. And just this resolution is, I think, and the contract is kind of an older contract, so my suggestion was just to update the term language to include the same language that's in our current city engineer contract. That just includes delivery of plans and the same term language.
Should we do that in another resolution moving forward, or could we amend it here now?
We could amend it at the table, and it would just be simply, the amendment would be to put the city engineer term language and delivery of plan language that's in paragraph three of our, the contract that you're already awarding on this, and taking that same language and putting in this older contract that's for the inspection escrows.
I don't have any objection to that.
So, table, make a motion. I'll make a motion to table?
Or you can revise it.
Just make a motion.
To amend it.
And just to be clear, just taking, making sure that all of our engineering contracts have the same term language and delivery of plan language. And this was just an older contract that I think has been on the agenda for, for years, but we've updated our contracts since then. So, that was my only comment. So, you could just make a motion to have that old language conform to the new language for that specific resolution.
Does anyone wish to make that amendment?
I'll make that motion.
Motion to amend, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion to amend. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call on the amendment?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes. Now, should we have a motion as amended?
Yes.
Do I have a motion as amended?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Roll call? Everyone understand what we're doing?
Mm-hmm.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember- Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
Are we adding that to the consent agenda at this point?
No, we just, we just voted on it. So it's done. Yeah, yeah.
Never mind.
Okay. And then what was the other one that was removed? I'm sorry.
Forty-one.
Forty-one.
Thank you.
Yeah, forty-one.
Do I have a motion on forty-one?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions or comments on the resolution?
So I had a question on this, actually a comment on this. The issue I have is that this is, you know, just so everybody knows, this is a pretty basic cash management plan for the city. It's, it's pretty canned. It's what the state requires. Most things are, I think this ordinance, this resolution's passed almost every year. What I've discussed with our city solicitor, and I, he agreed to make changes to it tonight. The problem I have is that when our auditors performed the 2021 audit, in both 20 and 2021, there were over $4 million in funds that the city has in the bank that is not insured by, it's not just the FDIC, but we have a GPTA, which is a, you know, a government fund that insures the money. It's not a complicated process to correct that, and I'm asking that this process be put into this resolution so that we have this fixed now and hopefully going forward. And I'll let the Solicitor address the.
Sure. So I can, I can just.
Can I just, I'm sorry, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Just to clarify.
Please, please.
Mr. Jaeger, what you're saying is that you want to include in this an amendment that would stipulate that there would be a requirement for four million, for any additional funds above a certain threshold to be insured.
It's actually, I'm sorry, it's more specifically, it's, there's a type of fund that you have to not co-mingle with all of your other funds.
Right, okay.
And what this will suggest, and I think that Mr. Gillen Schwartz will give us the wording, we'd like to make a modification tonight to it, so we could possibly.
So the modification would be that specific to the type of fund?
And I can, I could address that.
Okay.
Specifically, language from the state, which was then plugged into an auditor's recommendation. And then this proposed language would be this to address that issue. In the cash management plan, in Section Two, there's a Section A and B, you could just add a Section C. This would be new language. And it would just say, "The Chief Financial Officer shall take steps to avoid custodial credit risk for deposits not covered by the New Jersey Governmental Depository Protection Act." GoodPA is the acronym, "which does not apply to intermingled trust funds such as salary withholdings, bail funds, or funds that may pass to the municipality relative to the happening of a future condition." And that's language straight from the state, straight from the auditor. And essentially, that's FDIC, DC insurance covers up to, I think, $250,000. GoodPA for public funds extends well beyond that. But specifically, intermingled trust funds are the types of things that are not covered by that. So this is a heads up to the CFO to make other arrangements to make sure that those funds are secured in some way.
Yeah, so once she, she works with our banks and establishes appropriate unmingled, unco-mingled funds, we'll be right back to fully insured again.
Perfect.
So with that, that language can be incorporated into the cash management plan as an amendment, and then you can vote on the resolution of the cash management plan as amended, if you like.
Does anybody have any questions on that? Would somebody like to make that in the form of a motion? Why don't you?
I'll, yes, I'd like to make a motion that we add the wording that the city Solicitor has proposed for this resolution.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
And did you want to make a motion to vote on the resolution as amended?
Thank you. Do I have a motion to vote as amended?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes. Okay.
Now we have the consent agenda.
Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes. Okay. Onto mayoral appointments. Do we need a motion on these? I'm sorry.
I don't think so.
We do?
I don't think so.
I don't think so. Okay. Let me just say who they are, and I just want to thank Mr. James Testa for being reappointed for the HPC. He's done a very nice job, and I'm happy to have him back. Janice Striddick, who's done a wonderful job as well, and Joseph Jake Stevenson, who's done a wonderful job as well. Glad to have all three of you back, and my compliments to all of the HPC for all their hard work as volunteers for the city. Environmental Commission, we have Christopher Hayduk, Michael Jones, our cross-member from the Planning Board. I see Michael in the back here. Thank you very much again. We have Kimberly, and I had, last name is Grundenall, I believe. But she just is a new member this year, and I know is very interested in the Environmental Commission. So I want to thank you very much for, and was on the Green Team before this, and has done just a really nice job for us. So thank you. And returning again is Evelyn Lovitz. Thank you very much. She's been on the Environmental Commission for years and has done a very nice job. So thank you very much. And no changes to the Library Advisory Committee. They've all just done a very wonderful job. So Anita Desatnick, Elaine Cassidy, George Katniss, Ed Hutchinson, and Lorraine Walsh. Thank you all very much for your service to the city. Okay. Did I, did I do?
Get a backside of that.
Backside, I do, I keep going?
No.
Thank you.
Go backside of this.
Where am I at here?
OEM.
Oh, thank you, okay. I have too many pages up here. I apologize. Okay. And also, we have the Office of Emergency Management, and I'll say, those who are joining us, Maureen McDade, thank you very much. Mike Voll, Eric Przynski, Deacon Fashaw, Michael Eck, Aaron Burke, Eric Przynski, Justin Matts, Bruce Britton, Harry Back. I think I saw Justin here. Justin, thank, thank you very much for being here, and thank you for your service. I just want to say, Justin volunteers for the OEM and does all of our social media. He pushes everything out right away, and has just done a really fabulous job of that. We don't pay him anything yet, so, but Justin, I really thank you very much. Harry Back, Rob Kaminsky, Zach Palumbo, Larry Notch, Mary Notch, Terry McReedy, and Louis Blasco. So I want to thank you all very much. The OEM, as you know, is a very important committee, and thank you, Maureen, for serving with us. And lastly, we have the Class II Planning Board Member. Okay. And we already appointed, that's for you, right, Mike?
Mm-hmm.
Mike Jaeger.
Yes.
Mike, thank you, thank you very much for serving on the Planning Board. So thank you.
Good, my pleasure.
Okay. Ordinances for introduction?
Yep. 487-2022, an ordinance to update the Uniform Salary and Classification Plan for the Department of Personal Position in the City of Cape May.
We've got a couple requests to table this until the next meeting. Somebody want to make that motion?
I'll make, yeah.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor, Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes. Okay. I think we are on to the State of City Address. Okay.
Do you want to just click it as you go?
Can we just click it there?
Yep. I think if you just see the arrows, you know.
What's that? Yeah.
I just have to be careful. I don't step on any of these cords back here. Okay, well, good evening and Happy New Year to everyone. And I want to wish everybody a blessed 2023. It's an honor to be the mayor of the great city of Cape May. I want to start by welcoming Councilwoman Maureen Baldwin joining us at the table. And of course, I want to welcome all of you back to the table. You've done such a wonderful job, and, and I think you'll see in this presentation, we've done a lot of work, but we have a lot of work left to do. I want to thank our city manager, Vol, for joining us for another year. Mike, you've done an excellent job for two years, pushing us all in the right direction, and I can't thank you enough. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you for a wonderful, great year. This Council, Lou Vol, Council, want to do many, many more, better, better things than we've done in the past and continue to do. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And our Solicitor, same goes. You've done such a wonderful job for the city. I thank you very much. Our Deputy City Manager, Lou, you put up with all of my questions up until about 45 minutes ago. You're always on the spot, and you put your heart into the city. It's shown all the time. So I thank you very much. I want to thank our clerk, our deputy clerk, and our clerk, Aaron Burke, maybe listening, maybe watching a baby at home right now. But I, and I want to thank all of our department heads, who, I have to say, as kind of a volunteer, we get paid a small amount. But as mayor, you don't know the inner workings of how things work in the town until you really experience it. And I have to report, we have wonderful, wonderful people working for the city of Cape May, and it's an honor to be working besides all of them. I see Chief Fashaw in the back here, always here, always ready. And Chief, it's been, just working with you is awesome. And your care and passion for the city is just amazing. So I thank you. I want, I could say the same thing about Chief Coulter, Harry Back, Eric Przynski. Our, Eric is, of course, our Superintendent of Public Works, Rob Kaminsky at the Water Department, Lou Vito in the Construction Office, Casey Radek in at the Convention Hall, Debbie Lunho, who we are having again another record tax, you know, collection, which is great. And she just does such a wonderful job in her office. Neil Young leaving us as CFO, did just a wonderful job as CFO for the city. And I want to also just say thank you to Ed Rotz down at the, at the Beach Tag Office, who actually, this year, and I'll say this in the presentation, we went over $3 million for the first time ever at the Beach Tag Office, which is, which is really awesome. And of course, I want to thank all the citizens of Cape May, who, this, this town, as you all know that are here, is so special. City Council has worked hard to bring people together. That can be seen not through just the words, but some of the actions even that were taken this evening. Even some people tonight that were appointed to different areas actually worked on other people's campaigns that aren't at this table. But to your credit, you put that aside right away, and those people are involved in the city. And I think that should, is a true, it's your character as a council. It means a lot. And it should, because Cape May is a small town. All of City Council has vowed to protect our town that we love. This is the town and the home to many of us who have children here. The homes of generations of Cape May residents, whose collective protection of the beauty of Cape May have made it one of the most renowned communities in America. Our job as council is to keep it that way. We must protect our town from natural disasters by increasing our efforts for flood mitigation and by protecting the town from overdevelopment. The truth is, we as a community have done a very good job. We've created a beautiful and unique community. We've added tremendous value. Through the decades, Cape May has made smart decisions regarding our planning, zoning, and historic preservation. We cannot, we can protect our community by simply continuing those efforts, but we can't do it alone. We need the support of the community, and I'm asking for the support of the citizens of Cape May as we continue as a city council. We can also protect our community by being financially strong. All the labor contracts, of which we've settled over a dozen, the projects, the capital expenditures that have been done, have been done without a tax increase in 2020, '21, or 20, well, '22, and we're working on '23 as we speak. And we plan on having a 0% tax increase in '23. Yet, many of the projects are moving forward, as well as reasonable and well-deserved salary increases for our employees. We've done this with good, professional, and fiscally responsible planning. We want to bring back normalcy to our everyday cooperation, and perhaps even a little bit of boring government. Speaking of boring, I'll go to the slideshow at this time. And first things first, is protecting Cape May. The voters spoken, I think we listened. We strive to create a first-class facility for our firefighters, and we're doing so within a reasonable budget, and getting things done for our fighter, firefighters, so that they're only out of town for one summer season. And I do want to say a special thank you to our Deputy Mayor for helping this project all along the way. Lorraine, you've just done a wonderful job with your architecture background and pushing this job forward. I have to say, there's a lot of work left to do, but doing this project through the pandemic, through some of the inflation, and through trying to get all of the materials and things like that to be where we're at, really is a credit to the hard work of all the people that were involved. I also want to thank our grand opening committee, Shane Meyer, who's going to be working on a really good party for the opening of this, hopefully sometime in May or April, or. Okay, we're pushing for April. Okay. And that's obviously kind of where we are today. Just as important, of course, is our police officers. We want to make sure that we have the finest facility for them. This is an early rendering of where we're at with the property at St. John's, where we are currently in the DEP process of permitting. I have to again credit Chief Fashaw, who's done just a wonderful job going through this building. As many of you know, we have already bonded for this, and we are already working with an architect, so that when we do get DEP approval, fingers crossed, we'll be ready to hit the ground running. And we want to run that project, much like we're running the Firehouse Project, and get that done for our police officers as soon as possible. And I want to thank Mike Jaeger for his hard work on that task force. We've also increased both our police and fire people. This is an area of emphasis. Of course, some towns have been cutting back in the area of police and fire. Cape May certainly has not. And that's because we believe strongly in the safety of our citizens and the security that they provide to our citizens. And I want to thank again all the police and firefighters for doing their very best to keep us safe. On keeping us safe, we've also taken some of the more important things that are necessary, equipment. We've purchased new police vehicles, switching to hybrid electric and full electric. These are the F-150 and Mustang that are coming in the next couple months. We've also purchased a new ambulance, new communication equipment, body cameras, and switched to county dispatch. And of course, that's because we believe it's so important that they have the communication that they need. Not, not in the slide here, is also some of the work from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee that have done a lot to keep our bicycle and pedestrians very safe. You can go around town, you see a lot of the crosswalks repainted, a lot of the charros that you see out there, little bike charros. That was all through the Bike and Pedestrian Committee, and they've just done such a wonderful job. Also, part of protecting Cape May is protecting our history, preserving the AME Church, supporting the Harriet Tubman Museum, and finally repairing the historic Franklin Street School, as you all probably saw coming in. That progress is finally moving, and I think it's going to be a wonderful project. Here's a picture of the Franklin Street School as, as of yesterday. And then, of course, we have some of our tributes and improvements that the city is making that kind of hearken back to this timeless quality of, that we have as a town. Volunteers from the Fund of Cape May and members of the HPC took old historical photos, the kind like that, that make you say, "Why don't we build them like that today?" Instead, we kind of just have your little Cobra lamp. And they said, "You know what? Let's do it." And they funded it. So they're funding those, those arches, and I think that will just be a wonderful. that will just be a wonderful change from this to this. We've also worked on other areas in need of repair. Of course, you see, promenade in the same location. We used Cool Seal asphalt sealer. That was the first time that was used on the East Coast. A lot of cities, especially out West and Southwest, are using that to cool down their streets. And then, of course, protecting our environment. We worked with the governor's office to secure nineteen million dollars in state funding to preserve the Soul Track in perpetuity. And I want to thank all of those who worked so hard, not only here on council and in the administration, but the many citizens of Cape May who supported the cause of preservation. That includes the Latoral Society, the Concerned Citizens for Soul Track Preservation, and the Coddersers Association, all worked very hard to make sure that this property, of course, the largest property left in town, was preserved in perpetuity. The city, of course, has also taken its own steps. And here's the, above this building right now, the new solar panels, which are up and operating and saving electricity as we speak. And the state has recognized these, and I apologize for that photograph, but they have recognized the city as sustainable Jersey Cape May City Silver Certified. We're the only town in the state, under five thousand residents, that were given that recognition. This also, this was also recognition from ANJAC. All of the different groups of environmental commissions throughout the state voted Cape May as the best, which is really cool, and a tribute to the hard work of our environmental commission. And I'll just point out, too, at the top there, we've, because of that, that opens us up to a lot of grants that we otherwise would not be capable of receiving. This, just this year alone, we've received two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars in grant funding for electric vehicle charging stations. So, a quarter million dollars just this year alone. Resiliency. We've worked diligently with Atlantic City Electric on the electric substation upgrades, as you can see. A lot of credit should go to the citizens who interacted with Atlantic City Electric. And of course, our own HPC for turning what would be a commercial utility. You've seen the one in Rio Grande as you're on Route 47 there. It's really very different than what we have here in Cape May. It's not perfect, but everyone put a lot of effort into making sure it fit into our community as much as possible. And many of you might remember in 2019, when we had that blackout, we had, some people were out for three days. And that was in the high season in August. That won't be happening under this, at least we're told by Atlantic City Electric. Oh, and I also want to mention Shane Meyer, working with Atlantic City Electric here. Just to the right of that photograph would be not a sidewalk. And because of his efforts really pushing Atlantic City Electric, that sidewalk will now continue toward west Cape May. And it, they needed a little push, and Shane did that. So, thank you. Paid for by Atlantic City Electric. On some other issues with resiliency, we've also studied at the same location there, on Elmira Street and throughout the city. We've contracted with the Stockton Research Center to study nuisance flooding. Due to the data that was collected during this study, we'll be replacing the pump on Elmira Street this spring, I'm told. So, hopefully, that's before the summertime. But that, that's going to be a good project. As you all know, it's so important that we have our entrances and exits to the city not flooded when we need to get out of town. Elmira Street's one of those important places, so this spring, we'll be looking at replacing the pump at that location. We've also contracted with de Blasio Engineering, and they're going to survey the end of Washington Street. Most people forget it's Washington Street all the way to the end there at the Riggins, where we know we've seen some flooding. So, they're contracted to study that as we speak, and the county has already agreed to pay for the duplication of stormwater draining in that location. I should also say, the county is also replacing the tide flow, outflow pipe. There's a valve on the end of the pipe that was allowing water to come in during high tide. That's actually where a lot of the water was coming from. On their Pittsburgh Avenue project, which is starting this week, they're going to be replacing that tide valve, so that, that should help. But, under this circumstance, we'll now have two duplications of getting water off of that corner, which obviously is very important to getting out. Of course, that brings up water, which is probably the most important issue for the city moving forward. We have been in contact with our senators and congressmen. They are clearly interested in this project of upgrading the D cell plant, as the engineering was just included in the congressionally-directed spending bill. That was six hundred thousand dollars to pay for the entirety of the engineering for our D cell plant, as was a grant received for the initial assessment study to upgrade the D cell plant. Clearly, the government entities at the state and federal levels are very interested in this project. They're funding the assessment and engineering of it. But obviously, this will be a very expensive project that will need a large amount of funding. We will be applying through funding through the USDA, the New Jersey I Bank, the Department of Homeland Security, and FEMA. And I'll just highlight quickly, many of you know, I believe it's a sixty million dollar project being performed at the Coast Guard Base within the next two years. The fact is, we don't have the water allocation to give to that, that project. Our congressional representatives and senators are all aware of that issue, and thus, one of the, one of the funding sources we're looking at is homeland security. Onto roads. In the last year, we've increased our road paving tenfold. Roadwork, of course, is extremely important, not just to keep smooth streets, but replacing the utilities below those streets are extremely important. And my first speech as mayor, which was much shorter than this one, I said, we are starting the Get the Lead Out program, which was kind of a play on, on words, or WZXL. But, you know, the, we have hit those, we are trying to get ten percent so that within ten years, all of the known lead in the city of Cape May would be gone. The first two years were well over ten percent. So, we're well on our way replacing all known lead pipes left in the city of Cape May. A lot of times, that means taking up the road, which we've been doing. And we moved some of the road projects up in importance based on what was under the ground. Next slide here. County roads. I think a lot of people will be happy to hear that within the next twelve months, we're told by the county, Pittsburgh Avenue, Lafayette Street, and Beach Avenue will all be done by the county within the next twelve months. The, this is starting with the, starting with Pittsburgh Avenue, which, again, is starting this week. That's, that's starting this week and is supposed to be completed before Memorial Day. Lafayette Street will start in February in two phases. The first phase will go from Jackson Street, starting at Perry Street. That's kind of near the little miniature golf course there on, on, on Jackson. And, and that goes to Ocean Street. But it also includes the drop-off area in front of the school, which is a huge success for the city, making our kids safer. They're going to go in front of the school in, and I'll have a picture of that in just a moment. Beach Avenue is being bid out as we speak, and should be in within the next few weeks. So, that'll start at Wilmington, of course, down at Poverty Beach. Wilmington down to Madison as the first phase. So, Wilmington to Madison will be done before Memorial Day. All of those projects will be picked up, again, in the fall. Here's Pittsburgh Avenue detail. I'll just kind of go quickly through this. This is Lafayette Street. You know, Swains Hardware would be kind of in the middle at the top there. And then, this is the Lafayette, Lafayette Street School drop-off lane, which, again, is, is a wonderful success. Anybody who goes down Lafayette Street knows how tight it gets in this location. If you ever have a kid that's getting dropped off in front of the school, if their door opens, it's literally right into traffic. So, this, I think, could avoid a major disaster in the future. It takes away almost no space for the school. They fully endorsed it, and I'm just so thrilled that the county jumped on board with this as well. This is another interesting one that the county is willing to do on Lafayette Street. This is the St. John's Turning Lane, which does not exist today. Everybody knows, coming out of St. John's, trying to make that left-hand turn on the Lafayette Street is like the worst turn in town. What we've created here is a turn-in lane from Lafayette Street, which takes only three parking spots. And by the way, you all know those three parking spots would probably be gone because you can't see around them to make that left turn. As part of this, of course, Lafayette Street project, there's a hundred, hundred lot, parking lot going in there. But that also means there's going to be a lot more traffic that needs to get into that parking lot. So, if you can see, kind of towards the middle, there, there, that is the turn-in lane for that parking lot, so you can turn into Lafayette Street parking lot, or continue on and turn down St. John's. This will clear a lot of the congestion on Lafayette Street when you're coming into town, and I think is, is a big, nice change for the town. This is Beach Avenue section, just as an example of, of the work that's being done on Beach Avenue. So, on to the other projects. This year, we installed a new well, well, pump, I should say, at the water department. That has been functioning very well since we replaced it, and all four wells have been operational throughout the year. Of course, that is a footwash shower that DPW put in and did a wonderful job, but also ordered all new showers for the entirety of the beachfront. So, every beach that doesn't have a shower this year will have one by next summer, which is, I think, a great improvement for a lot of the community that goes to these beaches that don't have a footwash shower, and now will have one. Of course, this year, we improved our beach mats and had them go further out, and frankly, have that more in the budget for next year as well. We also, of course, did the parking lot. Twenty, that says twenty-two spaces. We ended up with twenty-four, which is great. And I know, Shane, you're working on the second phase, which is beautification, and actually adding the electric vehicle charging station. But Shane, thank you again for beautifying parking lot, which, which could use some help. Also, they, I want to compliment the DPW for the work that they've been doing around town. You'll see more of this over the winter. But this is the bathroom off of Ocean Street at the end of the mall, and you've probably seen the work that they've done already. This is actually at Wilmington, down by the Poverty Beach, where they're really beautifying the, the different bathrooms that we have. Lorraine Baldwin worked really hard on this, getting the shade structure at the school. It fit in there perfectly, and the kids love it. So, thank you very much. This is the maintenance building that's actually a lot further along than this photograph, but this will house a lot of our very expensive equipment that's sitting out in the weather, and, and, and that's getting, will be finished, actually, within the next week. This is the conceptual plan for Quanta's Club Park, which is currently out to bid. So, this is out to bid now. Any bidders out there, jump on this project. It's going to be a good one. But this adds a lot of ADA accessibility to the park. It's really a complete redo of the playground, adds some, a couple parking spots and a, and an ADA accessible bathroom. Affordable housing. I want to say one thing, because I, you, most of you know that there's been some things said about Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And, you know, the one thing I want to say is that you cannot, we, we as a council are not going to be able to correct every mistake that's made in the past. And, you know, as many of you know, we came in as this administration, and there were some things that I think were definitely mistakes that were made, that are still being reported about today. But some of these things, like engineering was another issue, where we saw major bills coming in, and we, we put a stop to that. We put a stop to this practice with the Affordable Trust Fund. But frankly, really who stopped it is the citizens of Cape May. You made a change in leadership. And those, that basically changed what we were doing. We stopped the practice right away, and now, we're on to what's important, is actually using the Affordable Trust Fund for what it's intended to be used for. Today, that trust fund is two million dollars, which is a nice amount of money. But if I handed you two million dollars and said, solve the affordable housing issue in the city of Cape May, you're not going to be able to do a lot with two million dollars. We know a lot of houses are selling in Cape May for two million dollars. Certainly, a lot of them are selling for a million dollars. So, how, how do we make the biggest bang for our buck? And what we're looking at now is working with the housing authority, who is looking at a major upgrade to their facilities. As many of you know, if anyone's been in the housing authority in that area, a lot of these single fam, single houses don't even have a washer and dryer. They don't even have washer and dryer facilities on the location. They have to go elsewhere. So, to, we, we are looking at the use of the COA funds. It's two million dollars. And looking at upgrades that could be made. They're going to be making a presentation to HPC, and a lot of this will be discussed in the future. But I want to bring it to everyone's attention, that one of the things that they're asking us to work with them is with the use of the COA fees. They are looking at, and will be presenting to council, upgrades to all of the houses, sixteen new family houses, so that would bring working families back into the city of Cape May, sixteen houses, and thirty-seven new senior houses, and thirty-three new parking spaces. Again, this will be a full presentation to council, and, and obviously, that will be in public. But what they're essentially asking for is the two million dollars to cover the gap that they have from our COA fees. But to be able to make such a dent in affordable housing for such a small amount of money, I think is something that could be really interesting that we should look at. Finally, looking at protect, protecting all of the above. The photo to the right there was taken just a couple of weeks ago. That's at, at Poverty Beach, the corner of Wilmington and Beach. It's another reminder of just how important the Army Corps Seawall Project is. That project is due to begin this summer. And of course, the future of Cape May depends on these types of projects. FEMA and the Army Corps is funding the project. Cape May has also received funding to engineer the seawall from the end of their project on this corner down to Philadelphia, essentially in front of Quanta's Club, if you know where that, where the, where the current promenade ends. And I think the engineers have really taken what was basically a block wall on the road and made it something a lot more aesthetically pleasing. This is the current condition. This is at the corner of Wilmington and Beach. This is the proposed condition from the engineers that we hired. Again, these engineers were hired fully with a FEMA grant, obviously showing that they're very interested in seeing this project occur as well. This is obviously the current condition, Beach Avenue, right in front of Le Mer. That would be the condition with this proposal. This is Beach Ave, and that elevation. Some of the other concepts as well. Okay, so paying for it, right? This is just a list of, probably easier to see at home, but a list of a lot of the grants that we have received and are applying for. And I want to thank the county and the state for all their help. We've gotten a lot of grants over the last couple of years. We've also taken, this is from the county, this is their commitment of four point three million dollars. We just received this a month ago, but four point three million dollars toward the seawall, which is a, a, a great partnership from the county. This is the six hundred thousand dollars that we received from the congressionally-directed spending bill. And then, some of the things that we've done as well. Of course, we've taken the steps to refund our bonds. Thank God we did that, because you all know where the interest rates went. We, we refinanced at one point five nine percent, one point five nine. We're up to five percent, I think, now. I, we are not, but the, the, the country is. So, we refunded the, those bonds, and that gave us a savings of one point eight nine million dollars and took seven years off of the debt schedule. We have, of course, funded the fire station that was also at one point five nine percent interest. We cut back on some of the wasteful spending, and we had a multimillion, a, a million-dollar savings, at least, in the county dispatch, going to the, going to the county. So, that was a large savings for the city. And I'm just, just about finished, but I just want to show you some of the numbers. Way up for the occupancy tax this year, I think we were up one point four million dollars. And I want to thank the MTRAC for their great suggestions that they've made over the years. And I know, Maureen, you were on the MTRAC during this time. Some of their suggestions have saved and gained the city millions of dollars. It really has worked out. This is our parking meters, which as of today is actually down fifty-one thousand dollars, but hasn't, we haven't counted all of December yet. So, we're hoping that that's as strong as 2021, which was a very strong year. And this is our beach tag revenue, and as I said earlier, was And this is our beach tag revenue, and as I said earlier, was the first year we've been over $3 million, is up $155,000 over last year. And again, 2021 was a home run season, so we're really excited about that. This is a real good snapshot of where we are financially as a town. The current fund is almost up to $10 million in surplus at this point. It's the largest surplus that the city's ever had, by far. And it's been creeping up year by year. It's, we're seeing a 79% increase in our surplus since 2018. Obviously, a huge, you know, nest egg that keeps us frankly safe for years to come. Water and Sewer has seen a 74% increase since 2018. Beach Utility, 85% increase since 2018. And Tourism Utility, which took a hit, of course, during COVID, but still saw a 20% increase. So we've kind of accomplished all of these things through the help of a lot of citizens in Cape May, M-Track. We've had a 0% tax increase over the previous three years, looking at a 0% increase for this year, and I think still getting a lot of important projects done. All of these accomplishments are community accomplishments that have had the support and endorsement by the citizens of Cape May. We've had these successes because we have tapped into extraordinary abilities of the citizens of our community. I finally want to thank all the residents, our local community organizations, businesses, and nonprofits. I want to thank all of the board members and committee volunteers, who we would not be able to do this without. All across America, there are, there's division within our country, Republicans, Democrats, independents, but in Cape May, we don't see it. Cape May has strengthened its fire department, strengthened its police department. We've strengthened our sense of community and our shared history. We've researched more into our African-American history and all of the different things that we're doing now as a community. I think Cape May has become a true example of what a community can be when we all work together. So I want to thank you all very much for your faith in me as mayor and this council, and I want to thank you all and wish you all a wonderful and Happy New Year. Thank you. All right. Okay. Now, I don't know where I'm at.
Mayor, I think we're up to council comments.
Oh.
Any council members would like to say anything?
Well, I can tell you that I'm not going to have any further comments, but I will, I will turn it over to Deputy Mayor Baldwin.
Just a couple of minor comments. It's really humbling, and it's an honor to be re-elected, knowing that Cape May is pleased with the direction that we're going. I look at this great team, and I'm thrilled to be part of this great team and continuing the progress within the city of Cape May that Mayor Mullock mentioned in great detail here. Thank you. I'd like to, and he left at this point, thank the honorable James Pickering for administering my oath of office. Today, we do begin a new year as we all come together to renew our commitment to the city of Cape May. I would also like to thank the people of Cape May for having trust in us and going forward to giving back throughout the next few years. When I look at kind of our Cape May, I see continued progress, and I see our great potential from the firehouse. And Mr. Meyer, of course, is going to put together, again, a great celebration. Looking forward to that. But the new police station, the seawall, yeah. But there's a lot that's going on, as you can see. But today, we're building on the work of generations of people who sat in these seats, whether they've had past successes, failures, or promises. My promise to you is I will work tirelessly for the city of Cape May. This is a wonderful city that we all call home, knowing that the responsibility is all of ours. I'm your voice, I'm accountable, I'm accessible and available. There's so much that we can accomplish together. We are blessed to have all of our city departments who share in the same commitment, and I thank you for your dedication, from the clerk's office to the manager's office, to all of our officials and boards. I also need to thank Mayor Mullock and council. I want to thank you for your leadership and really kind of can-do attitudes. There was a lot accomplished, so thank you. And also thank you for your vote of confidence for me as deputy. Lastly, I'd like to thank my husband, who's sitting in the audience, who does love the city of Cape May, and his unwavering support. So thank you. God bless everybody and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilwoman McDade.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I look forward to working with the rest of council. I'd like to thank the people who supported me during my campaign. Judge Batten, thank you for coming out this evening. I really appreciate it. This is a very exciting time for me personally, and I look forward to doing the work with this council. I made promises during my campaign that I intend to keep. I'm very open and honest. I've had those conversations with the mayor. He sort of knows who I am now as a person, and I hope that many of you get to know me also. There are people who helped me along in this journey, and I cannot thank them enough. But the person that I would thank the most is my husband, Joe. But thank you, and I look forward to working for the city of Cape May in my role as council. Thank you.
And Councilwoman Meyer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to just first thank my mom for coming here, and my friend Justin Mattis and Mrs. Mattis for coming here to support me. I want to thank all my supporters over the years. It's gone by pretty quickly, and I can't believe it's been eight years so far, but I'm also thankful for all the employees that make, you know, Cape May such a great place, you know, such a clean place. And I also want to give a real big thanks to all of our volunteers in Cape May. We have so many volunteers. I don't, it's got to be at least 60 people on that list? And they put in a lot of hard work, and they gave us a lot of direction on the city council. People like Justin, who helps out with the social media, thank you for that, you know. And I'm so glad to see our former deputy mayor, Stacy Sheehan, going on to be on the zoning board, because they can really use her hard work, and I thank her for her service as well. And I want to thank all the members of city council for working with me, and like the deputy mayor said, we do have a can-do attitude on this table. And I look forward to working with you, Maureen McDade. And I want to congratulate Deputy Mayor Lorraine Baldwin on her position, and I think you're going to do an amazing job being Deputy Mayor of Cape May. You really exemplify what it means to be a citizen here and a participant in all the things that makes Cape May great. And so I just want to thank everybody, and here's to another great year of lots of success and lots of projects. I'm very proud, as we walk around town, you can see everything being done, and that just shows how well we've worked together. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Mr. Councilman Yeager?
Yeah, so obviously, I have to echo what all my fellow council members said. I have to thank Cape May for electing this group. I really, I really think it's a strong group, and I think that everybody's going to get what they expect from us. I promise that. I think the rest of my fellow members promise that as well. And I'm looking forward to the next year, and I'd like to wish everybody a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Yeager. And I said I wasn't going to say anything, but I do see my mom and my dad, so I want to say thank you and I love you. And same to my wife at home with three kids, probably still going crazy from Christmas. And I actually also see Tom Carroll here, who I just want to give a shout out to. He and Jack Lord have just done such a nice job as our harbor masters. This is the first year we haven't had a boat that's getting ready to sink in the harbor, and that's because of their hard work, and frankly, saving a ton of money for the taxpayers, because you all know how much that costs. So thank you very, very much. With that, do we have public comment on here? Or not for the reorg? Okay. Oh, yeah, right, okay. And we have the, actually, the benediction next is, Pastor Nicole, thank you very much.
Benediction's very short and sweet, so may the Lord bless you and keep you. May the Lord make his face to shine upon you and be gracious unto you. May he lift up his countenance upon you and give you peace. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. With that, we'd like to open it up for public comment. Anyone here wishing to speak, please say your name and address for the record. Seeing none? Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Yes, that's adjourn.
Thank you all. Congratulations.
Thanks very much. Thanks.
Good. Good.